Call the meeting back into session now that staff have had a time, opportunity to work with both the developer representative and town attorney and planning department. So at this time, well, before we get there, I just want to ask council, if there's, if we're leaning towards a motion of approval with some conditions, then if somebody were to make that motion, then we could ask the staff, I think, planning department director would be happy to read those two conditions out into the record as part of your motion, if someone desires.
I do have a question for the, probably for the town attorney, but if this, for some reason, doesn't go through tonight with the transportation amendments, then, I know this was approved last summer, so then, do we just go with what was approved last summer?
Yes, they still have their entitlements from the prior voting.
So no, okay, so any of the things we're talking about here that they've agreed to just kind of fall away then, because we go back to last year, right?
Tonight's would be a modification, but it doesn't null, no action doesn't nullify the existing rights they have.
It just nullifies what we've been asking for, yeah? Okay.
So is there, is there a motion to be made?
I'll make a motion that we approve this with the two amendments that we have asked.
Okay, or if I could say, two conditions offered by the applicant, and we'll have Diane read those out, and I'll turn to you to see if that's what you intended.
Okay.
Okay, Diane?
Okay, so the first condition reads, "All single-family homes are to be pre-configured with conduit for a solar energy system," and this wording was used for the Castleberry Trail subdivision recently. And then the second one reads, "Transportation requirements can be accelerated based on a revised traffic capacity analysis that shall be done at 200 units and included as a condition of master subdivision plan approval." And just as a side note, we were going to have them do it at 400 units, but then realized they have to do all the improvements by that time anyway, so there's no need to do an additional revised analysis. This interim one at 200 units would be the appropriate point to do that.
All right, and so just for clarification on your motion, do you accept those conditions as your motion, as part of your motion?
Yes.
Okay, and before I ask for a second, Mr. Jones, there you are, sorry, front row, Jones, do those reflect what you understand as well? Okay, all right, thank you for that. Let me see if there's a second on Mr. Moyer's motion. Okay, we have a second. So we have a motion and a second with those two conditions as read out. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, thanks for the developers for working on these and improving the timing of these improvements. It'll make Hume Olive safer for everybody, even though there's already a problem there that they're coming in to fix. Yes, they will be adding to it, but they're going to be fixing it, what's already existing there. And then the solar conduit gives, hopefully, a less affordable product, end product, to the buyer, and they can make that individual choice if they want to put solar and get the tax credits on their own mortgage. Leave it up to them, but they have the ability to do that, so thank you for doing that.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on the motion to approve with two conditions?
Well, I'll say I appreciate the two conditions, but I think that we have to have examples of what's going on in the solar world, and I'm going to vote against this.
All right, not hearing any other comments or discussion on the motion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
All right, I heard three to two in favor. Any objection to that count? I can ask for a show of hands if I need to, but three to two in favor, okay. So that motion passes. Thank you very much for your time. We now move to public hearing number two. Public hearing number two is our Peakway Village PUD amendment, the applicant, Robert Seymour, and Peakway RES Office LLC. Presenting today, Lauren Stottermeyer.
Good evening, this is rezoning case 18 CZ 03, Peakway Village PUD amendment. This property is approximately 1.5 acres and is surrounded by Olive Chapel Road, Apex Peakway, Thistle Top Trail, and Sharp Top Trail. The current zoning is planned unit conditional use. The adjacent zonings are to the north, office and institutional conditional use. To the east, south, and west is planned unit development conditional use. The proposed zone is planned unit development conditional zoning. The 2030 land use map classifies the property subject to the rezoning as commercial services. The proposed planned unit development conditional zoning amendment is consistent with that classification. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on January 25th, 2018. The neighborhood meeting report is in your packet. This sheet is the original PUD that was approved in 2004. The only change is a text amendment right here. This amendment needed to happen because the subject parcel is smaller than what was originally anticipated due to the adjacent RCA common area becoming a larger, becoming larger due to the size of the required stormwater BMP ponds. The second reason is the access points to the site. The original shows a connection to Olive Chapel Road and a possible connection to, on Sharp Top Trail. These two accesses will not be permitted by the town or NC DOT, and the only allowable access point for this project will be on Thistle Top Trail. Everything else in the PUD approved in 2004 will remain the same except for this proposed text change. As shown on the previous slide, this is the original text approved. This proposed building will contain a significant architectural element or open space at this prominent corner. Parking will be located behind or beside the building. This is a new text amendment that's being proposed. This proposed building will contain a significant architectural element or open space at this prominent corner. At least 50% of the parking shall be located behind or beside building. With the change in this text amendment, it will allow more flexibility for future non-residential Planning staff recommends the approval of rezoning 18 CZ 03 with the condition as proposed by the applicant, and planning board heard this item at their meeting on March 12th and unanimously recommended approval. I will be happy to answer any questions, as well as the applicant who is in the audience.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Stottermeyer. Let's see if council has any questions for you.
I have a question. I've been interacting with you and the applicant about public art in the northwest corner, or northeast corner of the property.
Right here, yes.
As part of the potential or proposed public art plan for Apex. And what I heard back was that, I had an idea where it should go, and then there was some arrangement, so is there a clear place and size roughly that a public art easement would be appropriate, or that you guys have found to be appropriate?
We didn't measure it. We had given you just an example of the location. It would be between the corner and basically where there are some utility easements. It would not be in the easement, it would not be in the site triangle, but it's generally the corner area.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Lauren?
Does the, can you go back to the overhead picture of the current site?
Yes.
Okay, so that large swath of trees there to the west of the, is that, is that staying the same?
Yes.
That won't be changing?
No, that is RCA and the wetlands. Everything on this will not be changed. Only thing that will be amended is what's in here.
So the only entrance into this corner, the wording was highly accessible corner site, will be off of Thistle Top?
Yes. Let me go back to the wording if you'd like. Oh, yeah, so basically what's happening is, NC DOT will not allow access to Olive Chapel because it's too close to the intersection, and because this is a full access based off the original PUD, as well as this, this is the only way that they could reach the property.
That's an NC DOT decision?
There, I believe, maybe Russell can add to it, but there is certain requirements of how far an access can be from the intersection, and he might be able to assist on that, but...
Russell, I'd love to hear your input on this.
Yes, they just don't have enough frontage on Olive Chapel there, right next to that intersection. We wouldn't recommend it either. It's a very busy intersection, and you can see from the aerial, their frontage doesn't even extend beyond the taper for the right turn lane, so...
How about the Peakway, is that a possibility?
For right in, right out?
Yes.
Again, there's not a long distance, I mean, looking at that scale, there's not, there's not a whole lot of distance between Thistle Top and Olive Chapel as it is now, so I wouldn't recommend another access point in there. One of the problems we run into is, you know, you put in one of those triangular pork chop medians, and people just make left turns around it and create more of a hazard, or you try to put one of those concrete medians out in the middle of the road, which I know we all love so much, and those are kind of, those are fun to try and navigate around, so I wouldn't, again, I think it would be more of a traffic hazard to try and introduce another access out there. I mean, best case would have been if they could have gotten an access back to the west, to Sharp Top Trail like the original plan, but it appears they just don't have that property because of the expansion of that open space, so really all you're left with is Thistle Top. But from a traffic perspective, looking at the numbers, they meet the requirements for that location, so we didn't have any additional comments on that.
Is that the access to, to the west that was a possibility before? Is it just because it's going through RCA or through wetlands, or?
Yeah, my understanding is that's not a part of this developable property anymore. Maybe planning or the applicant can elaborate on that, as to why that's no longer a possibility. Is there, do you have an answer for that one?
Yes, so right, well, obviously, there's residents right here, but this is all RCA and wetlands, and you can't connect from there.
So when we originally approved the PUD, we approved an access point through a wetland RCA area?
No, originally, it was, before the stormwater BMP was enlarged and it, for that, the RCA was smaller, but because of when you enlarge the stormwater BMP, it had to, we had to have more land, so that went away.
Because of the development, BMP needed to be enlarged?
Yes.
And because it was enlarging, you no longer had access to the west?
Correct.
Yeah.
This is, I noticed it was Everbrook Academy, which I assume is a high school or something? What is that?
It's a daycare. It is currently in minor site review.
Yeah, and I guess it would be under site plan review to, concerned about stacking of cars. I know a daycare is a little bit different than a school, but you've still got a large flow of cars coming in there in the morning and the evening, and how are they going to... I look at the site plan, kind of, or whatever it is, that we're probably not supposed to see, and, and I just don't see a stacking configuration to allow cars to circulate around this building and get back out. But I guess, Russell, are we going to address that at site plan? I don't want to see another one of these Thalees things.
Well, in our experience, daycares don't stack. They park and walk the children in. I mean, the applicant could speak more to that, but we've not had, any of the daycare applications we've had, any of the sites we've approved, the explanation to us has always been that they, they park and walk in, so there's not a, not a circulation queue.
So should I assume that the driveway on the, I don't know whether it's north side or the, okay, on this drawing sketch, it's on the Highway 55 side, is that a two-way, so that they can get in and get out, I assume?
Yes.
Has to be.
Which one are you talking about?
The driveway that parallels Highway 55.
That's the Peakway.
Goes to the back parking lot.
Fifty-five's not in this picture.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was it? I'm sorry, I meant the Peakway. I meant the Peakway.
Right, right.
Okay, so what was your point?
Oh, just that it, to ensure that there is proper flow, and I guess we'll do that at site plan, or staff will do that at site plan.
Well, I think this drawing is a little different from another one that's, the next one, or another one in the packet that has maybe more of an engineering drawing.
That's what I'm looking at on my own screen.
Yes, that was part of the application that was, was given by the applicant. That just says what they were going to do with the minor site, but we can, that's basically what the minor site, give or take a couple details, that's what they're proposing.
Okay, no, if it's daycare and we don't have a stacking problem, I just, Thalees is such a disaster, as we all know, because we didn't get proper stacking around that building, so we don't need that here, okay?
All right, any other questions for Lauren, or? All right, thank you, Lauren.
I assume the applicant's going to speak?
Yep. So, thank you, Lauren. With that, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite Bob Seymour to come up. And Mr. Seymour, you are the applicant indeed, so if you, if you wish, you have up to nine minutes to speak, or if you just want to stop short and ask if there are any questions, we're happy to go that route, too.
Wonderful. Well, I'm Robert Seymour. I am the applicant, and my address is 1515 Carr Street. I live in Raleigh, North Carolina. As a kind of a game day decision, I have a whole, well, I have a whole packet here to speak from, but as a game day decision for my friend Peter, I'm going to keep it short and read from my chicken scratch instead. I was fortunate enough to live at this entire site that Lauren has just referenced, from 97 to 2004. I lived on the whole 15 acres as a single-family home. It was a great spot and a good place. It has a warm place in my heart there. The plan that I, has been submitted tonight in a request for the rezoning is one that will allow me to complete the development of the subdivision, but I still feel somewhat of a fiduciary responsibility to, especially to the homeowners that have come and placed, you know, 36 homes on that property and live there in what they think is a very peaceful and nice environment. After 10 years of having this on the market, I think I finally found this. The Everbrook Academy serves as a daycare, as we just talked about. The Peakway Village homeowners fully support the daycare as a low-impact use for their site and feel like it will benefit them and their neighborhood. And as prior owner of that entire site, I'm still owner of the, of the parcel we're talking about, but I am not the developer or the buyer coming into the project. In order for this project to work, the buyer developer needs the rezoning to make the project work with the drive-through, the driving around and the dropping off of children at the front of the building. It simply switches the parking from everything being behind or beside the building to allow parking in the front of the building, which is shown on the site plan to be on Olive Chapel Road, and that's the basis for the rezoning.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Seymour.
Absolutely. Would it be appropriate for me to discuss with Mr. Gant the art initiative as well at this point, or is that?
If you're welcome, if you're interested in an answer.
I love, yeah.
Okay, sure.
We've been correspondings, I appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely, and thank you for reaching out to me, and Diane, thank you as well for, for your correspondence as well. I and the buyer developer learned about this last week, so it kind of came a little bit late in the game to all this as far as what we have taken this to date. You know, when I first heard about it, I was a little bit distressed that this was going to be a real wrench in, in the moving forward with this project, but the more I thought about it, the more you explained it, and certainly Diane, the way you've explained it, it has allowed all my fears, and I'm a supporter of moving forward with such a thing. Because I did not know anything about this initiative when the purchase agreement was developed about 16 months ago, I'm contractually forbidden from entering into any kind of agreement with anybody, or promising an easement can take place tonight. I will tell you, though, that after Diane's communication regarding cost and expense to the buyer developer, and as a buyer developer, he's interested in dollars as well, with that information that it will not be an expense, he's on board, but also is unable to completely commit until the learning care group, which is the end-user tenant of this site approves the easement and the placement of the easement and the kind of easement. So the specifics are doubles in the details, but I really feel confident after what I've been through over the last two or three days with all the support you guys have shown me, this is going to be a non-issue. I can't make any promises, but I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be fine. And I'm asking you to support the rezoning so that we can move forward with the project and continue with the art initiative in the TRC site plan process.
Yeah, I just want to respond, I don't, I don't think we, I'm not intending, and I don't think, if we do easements like this in the future, I don't think we intend it to be a cost burden. It was just, set aside a place that if, it's, the Parks and Rec Committee says, oh, this would be a good place, then Apex wants to foot the cost of doing that, and then that would be, with approval of the business, that would be kind of the idea, as far as I can, I can tell. I mean, it's still being formulated right now, but it's not meant to be kind of onerous, like, we're going to stick something ugly on your, on your land, it's going to be something that's going to be agreed upon by everybody.
Perfect.
So I think that's, the cost is, but in theory, very minimal, if not zero, to the developers, so I think that's...
That's what I understand, that's what I relayed to him, too. So thank you for that, all right.
All right, any questions for Mr. Seymour, the applicant?
I would like to make a comment. I grew up down Olive Chapel Road, and I drove by your house on the big farm, and it's great to finally meet you. I loved looking at that every time I drove up and down it, so...
I've still got pictures of it, and I used to love mowing the grass with my big John Deere tractor, but that's long gone.
Did you have a place for beer on your?
Oh, yes. That's a must, yeah.
Yeah, I do have one, and I'm not going to press you on it tonight, because I heard what you said to Mr. Gant, but I'm, as you've probably heard before, pressing for getting solar PV on these buildings. It looks to me like you're going to have a big flat roof. I'd like to work with you off, off-site, or out of this arena here to talk to your developer and see what we can do, because it's an ideal, it's an ideal building to do that, and I can show you how it is cost-effective.
Certainly, I'm happy to put you in touch with Mr. Blanton of TriBeck Properties, who will be, I'm sure, happy to talk to you about that. Tell me, what does PD or PB stand for?
Solar Photovoltaics.
Photovoltaic.
Okay, gotcha, PV.
PV.
PV, okay, gotcha.
Photovoltaic.
Conversion of sunlight into electricity.
Gotcha, all right.
Mr. Seymour, I do have one more question. I'm a bit concerned about the only in and out being off of Thistle Top, right? As it naturally happens, the neighbors are going to see an increase in traffic of people going in and out, coming in off of Olive Chapel, especially coming down that way. It's probably, it's going to impact a little bit right there on Thistle Top, but have you guys looked at, explored all your options on ins and outs of this project to try to mitigate that as much as possible?
Yes, Mr. Moyer, I would, nobody more than me would have loved to be able to market this property with access points better than they are now, but as you heard just a few minutes ago, the DOT won't allow it on Olive Chapel. It's not a good fit on the Peakway, so my only access is through Thistle Top. When we had our neighborhood meeting, that was probably the second thing that came up as a concern from the residents, and the, I think the buyer developer was able to address those fears and was very forthcoming about how much traffic he expects, what the neighborhood flow would be like, how we can mitigate flow coming through the subdivision to get into the site, as opposed to coming around through the Peakway and getting into the site, and the neighbors were satisfied with his response, and they felt okay with all that, to the point that...
How much traffic are you expecting?
He says about, his, his words at the meeting that night were approximately one to four cars per hour. It sounds low to me, but...
Yeah.
For a daycare.
Mm-hmm.
Russell, would you, is that consistent with what you said?
Well, that's a good point.
Well, not to, not to take, if I could maybe take the other side of that, I drive my commute, I drive past a very similar place, and it's very different when you get into the grades where people have a fixed start time, but for this type of business, if it's set up for preschool age, you have parents dropping kids off on their way to work on their schedule, so it, maybe one to four is low, but I have witnessed what seems to be very low traffic at these, because they just seem to trickle in over the course of two and a half hours, you know, and then again later in the day, and that even stretches out even further, because their pickups can be anywhere from, you know, 11:30 till 3:00, just depends on the rules for the academy.
What do they start doing before and after school care? Do you have an approximate capacity for this?
I do not know that number.
So that would be, actually, and I want to get ahead of ourselves process-wise, because rezoning is different from site plan, but I would have a long-term concern that we do have to make sure that adequate space on, as Councilman Jensen said, that there's adequate space for the use for cars coming in, being on the property simultaneously, so they don't spill out onto the main street, because that would become a public nuisance pretty quickly. Mr. Jensen referenced Thalees Academy, the pre-high school, I guess it's elementary age. They have managed that situation very adeptly, and it is a, it is a bad scenario that they have figured out how to make not bad, but it, part of the challenge they have there is when they drop off, there are cars that start to pile up on the main road, and it impacts people's ability to drive, you know, who they want, people who want to continue on. Here being adjacent to a residential neighborhood, I could see the concern for that, so when site plan comes, I would want to make sure that we take that into account very seriously. So back to this, though, since rezoning is what's in front of us today, the question I have for council to consider is, is this an appropriate use for this location? And the request for permission from the text wording to allow some parking in the front, as you know, part of the planning initiatives in the past have been to try to keep buildings sort of closer to the street, so it has a little more of a different feel than the older style, which was push the building way back in the back and all the parking in the front, which is, tends to be unsightly. What this is, is kind of a split, so there's not all the parking in the front, then front being defined as Olive Chapel frontage, even though that's not the entrance. So technically, you're entering from the back of the property, and you have the ability to either drive around to the front or presumably park in the back, at least according to the sketch here. So the question, I guess, for council to consider is, is this an appropriate use and for the allowance of 50%, I believe that was what the word was, to be in, located in the, the front of the building?
I'm sorry.
Just wanted to reframe that for everybody, so we don't get too far down into the site plan discussion.
But if we're moving that to the front, are we going to look to hedges or something to kind of block off the view of all the cars? I don't know whether that's important, but we put, we put the parking behind so that it's aesthetically...
For aesthetics, right.
Yeah, and if we're going to put it in front, and I fully understand why we need to do that here, but, you know, upgrade the buffering kind of, I mean, you don't need a, you don't need a wide-open space in the front, so I would hope that staff could work with the developer to do that.
Well, let me ask a question for Lauren as the planner. Having some of the parking in the front, it seems that that creates, by moving the building to the south in the property a little bit, that creates the avenue between the back and the front, which, even though not ideal, presumably could lead to more vehicle storage on premises if that were to build up, whereas if you had that 50% or had 100% in the back and the building pushed up to Olive Chapel, you would have less of that asphalt for storage space. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Um...
Okay.
Well, can I, can I just answer, because Mr. Jensen asked a question we didn't answer? So the vehicle use area standards already require a hedge around the parking lot areas, and the way this is proposed is actually the UDO standard. So this zoning condition that's proposed, that's up on the screen right now, the proposed building contain a significant, well, the second part of it, sorry, at least 50% of the parking should be located behind or beside the building. That's consistent with the UDO currently.
Okay.
So it's not less of a standard than our current UDO, it's just different than the original zoning condition.
I see.
And then, yes, I agree that by changing this, we actually make the situation better for having more driveway length for any kind of stacking that may need to occur, so...
Great, thank you for giving us both good answers, yeah.
We both feel good.
We, I do, do you? All right, let me see if there is a, oh, sorry, the public hearing is still open. Mr. Knossen, did you have anything you wish to speak tonight? Okay, all right, I'll just check you off here, shall I? Okay, all right. So that, that's the list of people who intended to speak tonight on this matter, so with that, I'll close the public hearing and refer the matter back to council for possible motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Are there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Not hearing any, I'll call for the vote then. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Knossen. Appreciate your input, as always. Mr. Seymour, thanks very much for coming up.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much.
That brings us to public hearing number three. This is related to transportation amendments for bicycle pedestrian and equestrian plan map. Shannon Cox is presenting.
Yes, good evening. Planning staff and Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources staff have seven proposed amendments to the bicycle pedestrian and equestrian map of the transportation plan. If approved, these would also be reflected in the Parks Recreation, Greenways, and Open Space Master Plan. Angela Ranky, our Greenways and Parks Planner is here with me tonight to help answer questions. Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to pause after each amendment, since we have seven, to see if you have questions.
I like that plan.
Okay, great.
Do that.
Okay. So, the first two we can actually address together. The proposal is to remove the future multi-use path proposed on Hunter Street and Old Raleigh Road, where the X's are shown. Currently, there is sidewalk along most of this corridor. There's a gap here between Salem Street and Hunter Street Park. And there's a gap here just west of Laura Duncan Road. So, this proposal would allow either development or a future town project to fill those gaps with sidewalk instead of multi-use path consistent with the rest of the corridor. The second amendment on this slide is to remove the future greenway extending from Hunter Street to Laura Duncan Road, and then from Laura Duncan Road to the Apex Peakway. This greenway would require a mid-block crossing of both the Peakway and Laura Duncan Road, which we do not recommend. It would connect across from a private greenway, which is not open to public use. In addition, this property was approved for development without any access to the future greenway planned. So, that is the two proposals on this page. Do you have any questions about these?
All right. This is your time to ask questions on numbers one and two.
So, we've got a multi-use path over on Hunter Street Park, over here. Okay.
Your question?
Yes.
Okay.
And the plan was to connect that to down there, correct?
Yes. So, the plan would still be to have pedestrian facilities connecting there. We would just continue a 5-foot sidewalk instead of a 10-foot multi-use path. On a road like this, typically, our multi-use path standard would be a 10-foot asphalt path instead of continuing the 5-foot concrete sidewalk.
Okay.
So, the goal is to have a consistent facility on this corridor.
Okay. And then, there's a daycare on the corner down there where the multi-use path is already completed?
Here.
Is that correct? Is that, that's not a?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. And the multi-use path on the plan for both this road and this road would begin outside of the Peakway and continue. We're not proposing to change that on the current plan.
And you're not proposing to continue that multi-use path beyond what it already is, is that correct?
On the plan, it does extend in this direction. It's just proposed to be removed inside of the Peakway, basically, where we have more of a grid network.
Along Laura Duncan, with the removal of the greenway and that new development, so, just to clarify, there's a multi-use path proposed along the west side of Laura Duncan? To replace that?
There would be sidewalk here.
Okay, so that's proposed sidewalk from, okay.
Yes.
And a commentary, I think that sidewalk right near the skate park is the most important piece of sidewalk that we need in Apex.
Right here?
Entire town, but that's my opinion. Yeah.
Noted.
All right. Any other questions or comments on numbers one and two?
Is there a reason why we did not get greenway access here when we were talking to the villages of Apex South?
I don't have an answer to that question. I'm sorry.
It wasn't on the plan at the time. This rezoning was done a really long time ago. I can't tell you exactly what the year was, but it wasn't on the greenway plan at the time. We did not have a Parks Planner at the time.
We need to add as many of these things as we can to our plan so that we can get the developers to donate or in some manner. So, it's important.
Yeah.
More lines are better.
I'm always hesitant at removing greenway, you know, plans.
So, for clarity, I think, if you could repeat, but I think what the idea here is, inside the Peakway, you're looking at sidewalk where we have a grid kind of street structure. I think maybe that's the clarity.
That's right.
That's probably helpful is, greenways tend to, at least in the holistic view now, I think we're looking at, Peakway is sort of kind of a different location for, the greenways inside that may not necessarily be as helpful because you've got sidewalks going in.
I agree with your clarification. We're very supportive of greenways. You know, we agree that we should have a lot of them. This particular area, as Mr. Mayor was saying, is a grid network. So, the side-street facilities provide ample opportunities for pedestrians. And given that this would require mid-block crossings of some of our larger roads, we both recommended that this particular greenway be removed from the plan.
All right. Thanks. I think we're ready to go to the next one.
Okay. Okay. So, what you'll find with most of the rest of these is that they're proposals to adjust the plan to reflect what's been approved as part of development plans that you've seen. So, this is the Salem Middle and Elementary School campus. The area where you're seeing most of the change is the approved Middleton neighborhood. The proposal is to remove the greenway shown here and reflect the approved alignment in Middleton, which is shown with the green and white line. That means that we would also need to adjust the alignment of the greenway on the school campus, which we're showing here. And then, slightly shifting it based on topography to reach Salem Pond Park. If council approves this alignment, we would work with Wake County Public School Systems to make sure that it's feasible for them. We have already alerted them that we will be coming to them with this request.
So, this is alignment, not deletion so much, right? This is just realignment?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because there's a greenway already there, right? That you Xed out that we're going to be moving?
Middleton is building this part of the greenway.
How about down at the school? Is that one already there, or no?
No, this is not there.
That's not there, so we're just moving.
That's the one you're going to negotiate with the school system, is that what you're saying?
Right. We've already asked if we can talk with them about shifting that and they're open to conversation.
Questions? Any other questions?
Kind of makes more sense. It looks like a more efficient alignment.
Who would pay for that greenway on the school property? Us, or is?
I don't have that information right now. We would have to work on the funding.
That neighborhood up there, is it?
It's not. No. They're building it to the edge of their property.
To the edge of theirs, okay.
And if you go out there, it's actually pretty easy to walk right onto school campus from there.
All right. Thanks. Number four?
Okay, number four. So, here we are. Here's the American Tobacco Trail, Olive Chapel Road. The proposal, again, is to realign, not remove, a greenway on our plan. This is the Reedy Branch Greenway. So, it would be following the edge of the Sweetwater Development with a connection to Linden. Actually, the same alignment would be in this location, but we would add a connection to Smith Farm. It would follow a multi-use path along Richardson Road for a portion of the section in Smith Farm and then connect to the American Tobacco Trail. These alignments were approved with Smith Farm, Sweetwater, and Linden.
All right. Questions on number four? Or comments?
I like the connections. They look much more reasonable.
Okay.
Okay, number five. This is the point at Lake Castleberry. The proposal is to add this greenway connection to the American Tobacco Trail, which was approved with this subdivision plan.
Where does that end? In like a cul-de-sac or something, a cul-de-sac entrance in the neighborhood or something?
I'll defer, yes.
Or is that where it starts?
Ah, yeah.
Well, you're referring to this side of it.
That's correct. Is that the start or the end?
I would say that's the start, but.
That's a good answer.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Number six. So, this is the Jordan Point, Jordan Manors, Woodbury, and eventually Friendship Station connection. The proposal is to add a multi-use path along Horton Ridge Boulevard, which is a major collector street, shown here. We did have multi-use paths along portions of this on the plan. Now, it will extend further. Also, add a connection in Jordan Manors to the Little Beaver Creek Greenway and add multi-use path along, let's see, Jordan Point Boulevard here and Jordan Shire's Drive here. Again, these were approved with these plans. Any questions?
Do the developers are paying for all this one?
Yes.
Did you have the line?
Okay. The final proposal is in Oak Point. This recommendation is to shift the greenway out of the 100-year floodplain. So, instead of the alignment with the X's, we would follow this white and green line. A portion would be multi-use path and then it would meet back up with the alignment currently on our plan. The purpose of this request is to really minimize impacts to the floodway and wetlands. Any questions about this?
I think I have a general question on all of them. Is it appropriate time to say?
I'll see.
That was the last one.
Last one? Okay. Before you do, any questions on number seven specifically?
So.
All right.
My general question is, when we ask these developers and they're building this neighborhood to build a multi-use path or a greenway, whatever we're doing, do we try to mitigate and navigate through the existing foliage? Or do we just say, build a path that way and just bulldoze everything down and then we're good? Here's the reason I ask, because I was at the zoo today, so forgive me. I went to the zoo today. And we walked a lot of paths and there's a lot of big old trees all around that it seemed like they put effort into designing the path through the trees.
So, we do two things. One is, we look at the alignment that's proposed based on, a lot of times, our master plan shows corridors with sewer, other utilities. A lot of times, it's the outer edge of the 100-year riparian buffer. So, those are where the alignments have typically been placed when we do master planning. When we get into a project, and Oak Point's a great example, we looked at trying to stay in that outer edge, but because of the impacts to wetlands, when they got their plan originally approved and they went for permitting, their permits were not approved. So, they came back to us and asked to shift it closer to the road, which takes it away from that character of a greenway, but was what we needed to do to lessen the impacts. When we do, like in Smith Farm, we redid the alignment to work with existing roadbeds. So, we were only doing small tree clearing. And when we do our own greenways, we do do the tree surveys and try to, within the easement, navigate as much as we can around especially significant trees. So, it's a combination of trying to do best practices, but also sometimes where we are sharing a sewer corridor, we're already in a cleared area.
So, that was my next question. Do we put greenways on top of our easements, our sewer easements and stuff?
We usually do a widened corridor that's a shared easement. When we have sewer water, mostly it's, you know, sewer force mains, we widen our easement to share and we try to offset from them. We can pave over top of a sanitary sewer line, but we do not put structure. So, as we get more involved with permitting boardwalks as a greenway in wetland areas, when they're shared with sewers, we have to offset from the sewer pipe so that we're not putting any structure into the ground on top of it.
Thank you.
Just to wrap up, the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Advisory Commission recommended all of these proposed amendments at their February meeting. The planning board also unanimously recommended approval of the amendments at their March 12th meeting.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Let me see. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and seeing that no one signed up, I will close the public hearing and refer the matter to council for possible motion. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the amendments. Any discussion on that motion?
I would like to make an additional comment, I guess, about layering our greenways and stuff over top of our easements. It seems like, and I could be wrong, but it seems like it's a lot more efficient for us and easier for us if we have to go in and fix a pipe that we tear up our own greenway or a multi-use path as opposed to maybe a road in the neighborhood or something like that. So, I think, I know we've had discussions about this with other things. You know, so I do like the continued effort to try to mirror those together. I think it just is economical and just makes sense.
All right.
I had another comment that, I love this master plan, by the way, and I look at it a lot. I noticed that gas station, when we approved that gas, is it on your wall? Tell the truth. Tell the truth, they blow up, yeah.
It's not a blueprint.
When that gas station we approved a couple times ago and the greenway was right nearby and you said it was not, it wasn't, I was using that as a guide to try to figure out what was going on and I appreciate that fixing that one as well as some of the other ones. So, anyway, good job.
I think we've been looking in, speaking about sewer easements and stuff. We didn't get all the ingress, egress easements on a lot of those, but we have, I think, Steph, you've been looking at some of those to see if we can upgrade those. Is that, I mean, in the past, we didn't, we didn't try to get an easement for everything and you have to have, you can do your sewer easement, but then you have to get your ingress, egress, or whatever you might call it, or easement for the pathway. So, we've, I think Steph is looking at that because we've got a lot of sewers around here that probably could be integrated to this network at a relatively low cost, I would think, because, who knows? It is the town and dealing with people. But it's a really good way to go if we could pick up some more of those.
Okay.
And I think we're doing that.
All right. I'd like to call for the vote, if that's all right? All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you, Shannon and Angela. We now move to public hearing number four. This is a possible motion for various amendments to the UDO. Amanda Bunce is presenting variously.
Only four this time. I'll pause after each one to answer any questions that you may have.
Because Shannon made it work so effectively.
Yes, she learned that from me. Just kidding, just.
No, no, you should have just left it right there.
All right. So, the first amendment is to Section 2.1.3 to the Board of Adjustment section in order to update the section on alternate members based on the recent change last month when we increased the number of alternate members from 2 to 3. And to also make changes to the document position titles based on current practices and remove specific wording from a section of state law while keeping the reference to that state law. So, one, the first amendment is simply striking one of the items that the zoning board of adjustment, the Board of Adjustment can review as conditional use permits. That was actually removed from the UDO in 2006, so that's simply a cleanup item. The membership section, this reflects the change to add the third alternate member. That was approved last month. We simply overlooked the section that needs to specify the third alternate member. In the officer section, we're clarifying that the planning director or designee shall serve as the secretary for the Board of Adjustment. In the conflict of interest section, this is the specific state, specific wording from state law that we're proposing to remove. The section reference is listed here and this allows us, state law wording changes in the future. We don't have to amend the UDO to keep up with that. In the decision section, we're making a correction that the decision of the Board of Adjustment is shown in the findings of fact and conclusions of law, not the minutes, and that it is.
is shown in the findings of fact and conclusions of law, not the minutes, and that it is signed by the secretary of the Board of Adjustment and not the planning director. And that's all the amendments to that section. You happy to answer any questions you may have? Okay. Number two. Uh, this is amendments to the civil penalties and notice of violation and correction order section in order to clarify the due date of, uh, the payment of civil penalties assessed for a notice of violation. So the first section for the individual violation is to state specifically penalties are due within 30 days of the receipt of a notice of violation. In the continuing violation section, uh, the proposed wording, um, allows the notice to specify a time period of 10 days, but not more than 30 days for the, um, violation to be corrected based on the type and degree of violation. And so essentially, state law gives a timeframe to appeal and that's about 30 days. And so this would give a, a range of time for them to resolve their violation before civil penalties with them be enacted. And then finally, in the notice section, uh, it simply states upon receipt, a person shall cease violating this ordinance within the time prescribed in the notice of violation and correction order, um, as opposed to the flat 10 days. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on that. Okay. Number three. Uh, this is an amendment to section 12.2, terms defined in order to add a definition for public safety as it relates to public safety communication tower use. The Planning Board specifically asked staff to add a definition for what public safety is with regard to that use, which as you may recall was approved, I think that was the last month. Um, so the definition would read, "For the purpose of clarifying the intent of public safety communication tower use, the term public safety shall mean emergency management, police, fire, and emergency medical services." And finally, this is an amendment to, uh, the procedure section for major site plans. Uh, the section basically sets the thresholds for what, um, is classified as a major site plan and the only change that's being made is in subsection D. Uh, currently it reads, "Site plans proposing any building taller than three stories would be classified as a major site plan." And, uh, the proposal is to change that to four stories. I'd be happy to answer a question you may have on that. Okay. Uh, the Planning Board did, uh, hear these at their March 12th meeting and unanimously recommended approval of all four amendments.
All right, thank you, Amanda. Any questions for Amanda? All right, very good. Let me ask the council if they're, uh, sorry, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing, um, and I have no one who has signed up to speak on this one, uh, so I'll close the public hearing, refer the matter back to council and, uh, see if there is a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right. That passes unanimously. Just making sure. All right, that concludes our public hearings. There is no old business and no unfinished business, so we now move to new business where we have possible motion to approve Friendship Station master subdivision plan, uh, off of Hume Olive Road and Richardson Road. Liz Lofton?
So this is, um, Friendship Station, section seven. This is, um, the PUD that you heard earlier tonight. This site consists of multiple parcels totaling 14.22 acres and is located on the north side of Hume Olive. The property, um, is zone plain unit, um, conditional zoning. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the medium density residential lane use designation. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on July 31st, 2017, and a copy of the neighborhood meeting is included in the staff report. The subdivision is proposing 82 townhome lots. It provides one point of access onto Hume Olive and two sub-streets, um, are two points of connection to the McKenzie Ridge subdivision, along with two stubs to the southwest and one stub to the north for future connections. Um, since the subdivision is over 50 lots, one, um, half acre playon is provided in a central location near the male kiosk. Um, the project was reviewed by the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission in April of 2017. The commission unanimously recommended that a land dedication onsite or offsite be the focus of this project due to the recent acquisition of, um, acreage in close proximity to the future park, public park. The developer is actively working with the Park and Recreation staff on land acquisition prior to the option of paying a fee in lieu at the time of first plat. Um, 25% RCA is required and the applicant is proposing 3.76 acres or 27.2% of RCA to meet this requirement. Um, water service will be provided by an extension along Hume Olive and sewer service will be provided by an extension to adjacent McKenzie Ridge subdivision. Electric will also be provided by the Town of Apex. Per the PUD, um, a 30-foot type E buffer is required along Richardson Road and Hume Olive. Um, a type B is required to the north and west. Um, these buffers are consistent with the UDO at the time the original PUD was submitted. A full list of the architectural and zoning conditions are included in the staff report. And Planning Board heard this item on March 12th and unanimously recommended approval of the proposed master subdivision. Um, planning staff can recommend approval and the applicant is also here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, before you step away, let me just see if council has any questions for you. Any questions for Liz?
Are there any, um, we talked a lot about transportation improvements earlier. Are there transportation improvements tied to this phase of this?
Um, still, not with this subdivision at this time. There'll be improvements at this intersection with additional.
Can you go back to the, um, where it shows the overall picture earlier in your presentation of Richardson, right there? Uh, what's the plan with Richardson Road in the future, how it takes that bend to the south?
Uh, I'll wait, Stuart, answer that. I know we've had more conversations with...
So we've been working with, um, DOT and this conversation came up when we did Parkside at Belacasa, but that radius on that, um, particular curve is about 300 feet and it's supposed to be 850. So as we've developed along that corridor, we've been reserving an area for Richardson Road to shift in the future. And so part of this plan actually shows the alignment of the future Richardson Road. So we'll dedicate that portion that will be in the new alignment. The sidewalk that goes in on, in this phase will be on the future alignment. But, um, I, I don't know when, you know, that curve will actually get repaired, but we're allocating space for, for that change in the future. That answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so at this time I'll ask council if there's a discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on the motion for approval. All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
All right, I thought I heard three to two. Anybody disagree? All right, so that passes three, two. And we now move to new business number two. New business number two. This is, uh, Gray's Landing Master Subdivision Plan, Liz Lofton presenting. Uh, do you need a minute? Okay. Can I ask what's happening? 'Cause we're waiting for Ms. Lofton to present number two.
I guess there's some confusion about she saying her properties are included on this Friendship Station. Um, so we have authorized agent forms from all of the property owners.
Well, that was for rezoning, it wasn't to sell.
It's not...
But let me, let me, let me pause for a second. So Stuart, do you believe you can have a conversation out in the hall?
Yes.
With, with the nice lady? All right. Well, I need Liz to come present new business number two right now. And if, if Mr. Jones can talk to you out in the hall, that would be great. All right? All right. No, that's, no, that's all right. I understand, um, if you need a second. 'Cause we've changed this into number two, which is Gray's Landing.
Gray's Landing, um, master subdivision. Um, to orientate you to this site, the original Belacasa is to the north and west and Crockett's Ridge subdivision is to the south. This site consists of two parcels totaling 6.89 acres and is located on the north side of Apex Barbecue. Um, the property was, um, rezoned to low density residential conditional zoning. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the low density residential lane use designation. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on October 19th and a copy of the neighborhood meeting report is included in the staff report. The, uh, the subdivision is proposing 14 single-family lots with one point of access to Apex Barbecue Road via an extension of Franconia Way. A sub-street to the east is also provided. Um, single-family detached developments under 30 units are not required to be reviewed by the Apex Parks and Rec Advisory Commission. Therefore, a payment, um, of fee in lieu will be paid. A proposed sidewalk connection is also shown to Apex Barbecue Road. Since the subdivision is proposing stage grading, 25% RCA is required and the applicant is proposing a total of 1.67 acres, um, or 25.3% to meet this requirement. Water and sewer service will be provided by an extension of existing service along Franconia Way. A 30-foot type B buffer will be required along Apex Barbecue. A 10-foot type B buffer to the north, west, and east will be required and a 20-foot type B buffer is proposed along the east adjacent to lot 12, um, to meet the UDO requirements. A full list of the architectural conditions are included in the staff report. And the applicant and myself are here to answer any questions. Um, there was an email that was sent to you by the developer and he tried to address some of those concerns with the, um, four attached, um, conditions that he's willing to provide.
Okay. And ju- just to be clear, Liz, um, this, the presentation that you're making today, um, staff is recommending approval?
Yes.
And Planning Board recommended approval?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, even with that, the developer has offered additional conditions?
Yes.
And that's, I presume, this sheet that's labeled?
Yes.
Gray's Landing Master Subdivision Conditions, and this is additional?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, and have, has staff reviewed this list or approved this list at least?
Well, I just wanted to clarify, there were five, not four. There was an additional one added.
I'm sorry, there, there is. I'm sorry.
Okay, I see five on my sheet.
Yes, there are.
There are. And then I also wanted to point out, number one, it says truck size, which I believe the applicant had written trunk, T-R-U-N-K, but if we could change that to caliper, that's actually how we measure trees, is a caliper. So if you could change truck to caliper?
Right.
That will, that will be helpful.
Mr. Smith, I presume? That's okay? All right. No trucks? At least, no six-inch trucks? All right. Okay. So, and staff reviewed this list, I just want to make sure.
We worked with the applicant on the wording because the email that you all received was very wordy and it was going to be difficult for us to enforce. So this wording is what we had, uh, worked with him and suggested some changes to. So we're fine with the way it's worded now.
All right. Very good. Let me see if, uh, council has any questions for you, Ms. Lofton?
It's for me, I guess my question was related to, um, when we were last here. Um, I don't see it reflected here, but was there conversation about the request from, um, an impacted, a neighbor who feels impacted to add a 30-foot buffer on Terracina Court between that property that has a pool and a house that could possibly be higher looking down? Was that discussed with you at all?
It was not discussed with me and I don't remember that conversation during the rezoning.
Was there any discussion with you related to NC DOT and the nature, the concerns that we talked about with the nature of the road? The quality of that road and how we feel that, not having another access point, this road needs some work? Was that ever brought up to you at all? No? Okay.
What's the speed limit on Apex Barbecue there? Is it 45?
I think it's 45.
I think it is. And we've tried to get Department of Transportation to lower that.
Yeah, and I, I'd tried previously, um, to get... Okay.
Would there, Mayor, would there be a possibility we could concede or push that 35 instead of 45?
On Apex Barbecue? Um, I, I think we can certainly make the request. I know that, um, it, it can be a challenge if we don't have control of the road.
Yes.
Um, because if the DOT assesses it and they look at it and say 45 is actually reasonable for the road, then, um, that's their assessment. We, we can put in a request.
Yeah, I mean, I thought we had discussed that before and that was something we were going to look at. I think another thing is, you know, adding, you know, a few more homes that now can't even walk across the street to access the amenities that are for, so that's a concern. You can't, hard to drive across, but now we're talking about how do parents, you know, who don't need to get in a car to go to an amenity, they can't get across the street safely walking, that's a concern that I, I still have, so...
Is the, does this, so the site is already rezoned for these homes?
I know, and I mentioned this all before, so I'm, I'm just asking, has there been any movement on any of that from NC DOT and I hadn't heard anything.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions, uh, from council to Ms. Lofton?
Liz, what is the pedestrian crossing on Franconia and Barbecue Way look like over to, across the street to the nature park?
So here is Franconia and Apex Barbecue to the nature park. Um, there's no striping, isn't what it looks like.
And I had asked for that years ago.
Now, I'd, I'd imagine as this continues down Apex Barbecue Road, that's why we're stubbing that road, correct? Um, you know, I, I know Ms. Rinkie's gone, but I didn't know what our future plans were for pedestrian travel along Barbecue Road and the intersection.
I can look at the master plan or look it up to see what...
I know it's not related to this specifically.
Right.
To you, Mayor, I know you're going to say that, um, but just something to, to say publicly to think about as this, this starts developing out here.
Yeah, I think, I think this is, in fact, you know, no, this is good. I, I think, um, general comment is, this area is going to be built, built up. We know Apex Barbecue Bridge is going to be rebuilt. We also know that's going to provide pedestrian access along a great portion of this. I think from a pedestrian perspective, it would be good to consider, um, how people from the, in this case, the north half of Apex Barbecue can get towards the park. It's, it's reasonable and foreseeable that people are going to want to walk in that direction, whether they're starting from off the map to the east or off the map to the west or right there, um, on this northern section of, I'm not sure what the proper name is. Older Belacasa is what I call it.
Yeah, we got the original, but also if they are planning, it's Gray's Landing at Belacasa on this sheet, if they're planning to go into the HOA, which was mentioned here in this condition, then the amenities are all across the street. So the pools, the clubhouse... So, the pools, the clubhouses, the, all that stuff beyond the nature park for part of the neighborhood as these folks become, they will not be able to access it by foot, by scooter, by bike easily.
Danger's enough in a car trying to go out.
Right. So, I'm going to start forwarding all my emails to my other folks.
Um, okay, so with that, with that comment that I think, you know, our pedestrian plan and our planning staff understand that we do want, longer term, this needs to be pedestrian-friendly. So, with the context that we have in front of us, we have a site plan presented that staff has assessed meets the UDO, meets the rezoning, and the planning board has seen that it meets the rezoning. And I, I just want to real quickly look at the five conditions that have been offered above and beyond even the current requirement. And I, I don't know, do you want to walk us through them real quick, Liz? Do you have the same sheet, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, there was concern about saving some trees on the western portion, and the developer has said they will add a condition to their covenant, so that's not something that the town could enforce. That would be an HOA covenant to require that any trees in the building envelope would have to require HOA approval.
Okay.
So, that would be, so we're already showing tree protection sensing here. It would be some of these trees here. So, they would be outside of the building envelope, but they would still be on the lots.
All right. So, this, this is where the six-inch caliper?
Yes. And that would be something the homeowner of that lot would have to go to their HOA.
Okay. All right. We'll go to number two?
Yep. So, lots four and five, there was concern about additional landscaping here, and the developer has said they would provide additional landscaping as long as it didn't disturb any of the existing trees. And staff felt like this condition, to the maximum extent reasonable and practicable, to add additional landscaping between the existing trees here. And we would work with them during the construction plan review.
Okay.
And that's the same for number three, is that we would look at adding additional landscaping here in benches.
All right.
Number four is to help the Dickerson property with post-development drainage. So, we tried to word the condition so that we would be able to enforce it.
Where is that property at?
It's right here.
Okay.
And number five, the developer will add one solar to a minimum of one house in the community.
Thank you for walking us through those. Any further questions or comments from council?
I would like to say thank you to the developer for working this out with the neighbors and making these concessions, and it shows me personally that you guys listen to what's going on.
I'll echo that. I very much appreciate your efforts, and especially being Mr. Solar here, that you're going to add one to the, to the development. Thank you.
I'll go next.
And if I can help you out in any way, I'll be glad to do so.
I'll go next. We did speak today, and I did ask for these sort of conditions to be at our seat so we can read them, and it's better to, than to do it differently. The, some of the things I asked for, though, they're not reflected here. And some, one thing that's out of your control are related to the road, but I did ask for just a sort of a good faith of, you know, reaching out to NC DOT to help me, because I've been trying to do this for, since before, since I moved there. So, so I do think that, I wish that the conditions would affect a little bit more of what, like I said, I want people to have agency. And so, so I'm, I'm not going to support this at this time. I think, you know, having it be less impact because it's lower, lower number of lots, that there are some things you're willing to do, and you put it in, in writing here for ease, like I asked. But, because of the nature and the quality of the road that I am on every day, and the nature and the quality of the emails that I get, and the problems I have to solve, try to figure out how to solve for folks that are not, we didn't parade them to some of that, but we're all the beneficiaries of that condition of that road really needs to be fixed. And so, it's a concern to me. And so, for those reasons, the timing of this project where that road really has issues, I won't be able to support the project at this time.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on the motion for approval?
I will say that, you know, to this conversation, I am glad to see that some conditions are in writing that are, you know, enforceable. Definitely going above and beyond is going to go, show, you know, good faith, especially in future projects that you might have. So, I definitely look forward to seeing how this might turn out.
All right. I'll call for the vote, then. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
All right, that passes by four to one. We now move to new business number three. And I would, just before we quit, I would echo the sentiments. Thanks for offering additional conditions. And I think this, I appreciate the concerns that you have, and I do believe that in time they'll be addressed. And I believe that this site plan is compliant with the rezonings, and I think we have an obligation to, to let this site plan move forward. So, I believe the council made the right decision. At this time, I'll move to new business number three. We have the Holloman Hills Master Subdivision Plan, and Shelley Mayo is presenting.
Good evening. She said this is Holloman Hills. This property is located just south of Old US-1, slightly off the map here. It's to the east of the Regional Water Reclamation Facility and along New Hill-Holloman Road and Church Road. The parcel is 23.97 acres. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting in, on May 16th. The neighborhood meeting report is attached. The site consists of four parcels totaling 23.97 acres. It's wooded and crossed by several streams and large utility easements. The parcel was rezoned to medium-density conditional zoning in two zoning cases. Both of those cases were approved with identical uses and zoning conditions within the last six months. The conditions that apply are list, excuse me, are listed in your staff report. The medium-density conditional zoning is compliant with the 2030 land use map designation in this area. The parcel will be stage graded per the UDO. It will connect and extend to existing public facilities. As I said, there are several large easements across this property, so connection to water and sewer is right there. Just waiting for it. And this is in compliance with the approved wastewater system map and water system map. The project does drain to a FEMA-designated 100-year floodplain that's along this area here, and is located in the Town of Apex's Secondary Watershed Protection Overlay District. As such, all Town of Apex stormwater and drainage requirements are being met, and no lots are allowed within the floodplain. The buffers that are provided are those that meet the UDO and the zoning conditions. There was a condition, number 10, that says the buffer along New Hill-Holloman Road will be a type A. That has been met. And the applicant was required to provide 25% resource conservation area. They're providing slightly over that at 25.07%. It's a smidge more, but it's a smallish parcel, so. The proposed residential subdivision plan is consistent with the Apex Transportation Plan, and it was reviewed by the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission on January 31st. They recommended a fee-in lieu. The total of that fee-in lieu is in your staff report. The subdivision proposes three connections to the existing street network, a right-in, right-out access on New Hill-Holloman, a full-movement access on Church Street, and a full-movement access on Garrus Road. The proposed master subdivision plan meets all the requirements of the UDO. Planning staff recommends approval, and the planning board heard this at their meeting last week and unanimously recommended approval. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayo. Questions from Shelley?
Yeah, I have a question. So, when I was looking at the plan, I noticed the right-in, right-out on New Hill-Holloman. It seemed to me like everybody's going to go on that Church Street to get into the neighborhood. And so, it, I mean, I guess that you guys did these studies to make sure it's not going to be just so backed up on that street, because they're trying to, because everybody's going, I'm assuming, going to get in mostly from US-1 that way. And so, was there a concern with that road being overly used, I guess?
Not with the number of units that were shown here. The reason for the right-in, right-out was actually because there wasn't a way to shift this intersection on New Hill-Holloman further away from the intersection of Church Street. We have a minimum distance of, I think it's 800 feet for a full-movement access between, on a major road like this. And because they couldn't shift that distance far enough, this is four or 500 feet, if I remember correctly, that's why the right-in, right-out. It's possible that a good portion of the traffic may come out here, but honestly, with the three different connections, and considering Garrus is really not that far off from, it connects up here at Stuart and down this way, there's a good chance that, that all three will be reasonably well-used, so there shouldn't be much backup in that area.
And did the plan, I couldn't tell from the map, what's the current status, and is it, and what are the improvements along that Church Street area?
It's a two-lane regular road. And there are no planned improvements by this subdivision on that particular road.
Okay.
What is the future plan for New Hill-Holloman? Three-lane, four-lane?
I don't recall off the top of my head. I think it's a collector street, but I'm not 100% certain. I'd have to look. I'd be happy to do that for you if you give me.
Yeah, I'm curious, because I know it's a two-lane country road.
It's almost certainly going to be a major collector sometime. It kind of already is, you know?
Yeah.
There's not any change proposed. But, we will be sure to tell transportation staff, we're doing advance Apex right now, to take a look at that.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. I was looking through the packet in the neighborhood meeting. I usually look at that to see what concerns are from people that, that are around. I can't tell what in the world was asked.
There were actually no attendees at the neighborhood meeting.
Okay.
Let me double-check. The only attendee was actually one of the other property owners, and they just discussed the general plans for the property and essentially meaning what type of construction, meaning the single-family that is being proposed out there. But, I agree, I should have caught that, and we'll make sure that that doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Any other questions for Shelley?
You said stage grading, but they're actually going to mass grade basically in stages. They're going to knock everything down. Almost have to for this.
They're, they're going based on the definition of stage grading that's in our UDO, which is that they can grade up to 20 acres within certain spacing along the roads and the, and the infrastructure.
Yeah.
But, yes, they will most likely be grading the majority of the site just in stages.
Moon scape.
You could use that phrase, yes.
Is the developer here tonight?
Yes.
Okay, good.
He's happy to answer any questions that you all have as well.
And this was, oh, did you have a question for the developer?
Yeah, I, I kind of do.
Okay.
I'm back to my, my solar.
Well, I think they've talked about this already.
Are we getting the pre-configured for the solar?
Yeah, real quick, Mike Foley, New Hill Development, 107 Oxens Road. Carrie, yeah, one of the conditions was to pre-wire all the houses for solar?
Yeah.
And it's something that we're planning to offer as an option for the homeowners?
I was kind of hoping you might, we can do this off-site, but install at least one solar PV system as an example for how that whole thing works.
Yeah, I'm curious what the cost is. That's, you know, it's something I'm not.
I'll work off with you off-site, outside, and show you how it can be done very inexpensively.
Okay. I like that.
Yeah, me too. All righty. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Foley.
Okay, sure.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on the motion?
I would like to say thank you to the developer through the rezoning process six, nine months ago when we went through this, on the concessions that were made, reducing your number of units, increasing your buffers. Yes, I appreciate that.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That concludes our new business, and that takes us to our closed session. We do have something we need to discuss with the town attorney. Other than discussion with the town attorney or consulting, is there any other conditions I need to put in the motion? All right. So, at this time, I'd like to ask council for a motion to consult with attorney in closed session.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, let it be known, the council is going to closed session, and at this time, there's nothing else on the agenda. We will come back out, but we don't know how long it'll take, and there's nothing else for us to discuss tonight. Thank you very much.